Okay, good evening, everyone. We are ready to call the meeting to order. Please, Mr. Kern.
Mrs. De Silva.
Here.
Mrs. Gillis.
Here.
Mrs. Messick.
Here.
And Mrs. Rigby.
Here. And now for the Pledge of Allegiance. We have the fifth grade students, I believe, who are here tonight with Mr. Bauer, President Bauer, or Principal Bauer, excuse me.
I did, I just gave you an upgrade.
Thank you so much, Dr. Marshausen, members of the board, Brian Kern. These are new members of our fifth grade class at Bishop Elementary School. I did challenge them to introduce themselves quickly, so we'll start down there. Logan, you're going first.
Hello, my name is Logan, and I'm coming from Dearun Elementary.
Well, we like sharks.
My name is Ricky Longton, and I'm in elementary.
My name is Cory Lewis, and I'm in elementary.
My name is Cory Lewis, and I'm in elementary.
My name is Dracula, and Dracula's on the way, and I'm not perfect.
Logan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys.
We'll see you on Tuesday back here.
Okay?
It's recommended that the board approve the July 7th, 2025 regular meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Gillis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Messick. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Gillis?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. De Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigby?
Yes. Motion passes four to zero. It's recommended to approve the this evening's agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. De Silva, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Messick. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. De Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Gillis?
Yes.
And Mrs. Rigby?
Yes. Motion passes four to zero. Moving on to presentations, we have a TOELS career and technical update from Mr. Melody.
Good evening, Dr. Marshausen, President Rigby, and members of the board. First of all, I'd like to congratulate you on the fabulous building. It looks fantastic. Congratulations, Mr. Stark, for getting it open on time and hopefully on budget. Looks fantastic. Walking around, it looks very modern, very innovative, so I'm sure everyone's proud of it. It's a centerpiece for the district. So just a brief, quick TOELS update, you probably have the report in Board Docs. This year again, we have a record-breaking enrollment of 1,342 students for Level 1 and Level 2, the enrollment to open the school year. That's well beyond capacity, and we're doing everything we can to make sure it's a smooth opening for the district. Another brief update is the construction update. The board had originally approved $30 million for the expansion of the welding labs and daycare centers and some renovations within the building. The final guaranteed maximum came in at 25, five, just under that, 25,500,000. So there's a little bit of budget remaining, and we are going to add an additional outbuilding to support the welding, construction, and fire programs. We do have a groundbreaking scheduled for Friday, August 29th at 9:30 a.m. There'll be more details sent out to everyone as they're finalized. And also, we have our convocation next week, next Tuesday, is the kickoff for our school year, and we have the Higher Director of Development as a guest speaker for the convocation. And then, coming up in early October, October 2nd, we have the first of our Career Tech Advisory Committees. As I've explained in the past, that all Career Tech programs have to have industry-credentialed advisors, so this is a kickoff for that. There'll be about 350 people from industry programs. We start with a dinner, and then they break off into the individual programs where they meet with the teacher, get feedback on the lesson plans for the year, the direction of the curriculum, and what the people are seeing from an industry standpoint to see if anything needs to be modified. So that's always a fun evening. And then finally, the satellite programs continue to grow, specifically in the seven to nine, the middle school programs, the Career Tech exploration programs. There's a lot of growth in that area for middle schools and freshmen and some sophomores to learn more about the Career Tech programs and opportunities in Career Tech environment. So that's the brief update. I know, Mr. Silva, you emailed a few questions. I did respond to you. You probably haven't had a chance to read your email.
Yes, I did. Thank you for responding.
And if there are additional questions, feel free to reach out. But one of the questions was the early, the Career Tech exploration programs, if a student does come and attend one of those programs, they do have priority access into the program of their choice the following school years. That's one of the benefits of being participant in one of those programs.
I have one more question.
Yes.
Just a simple question that other people might have. So in your report, you wrote that the building that you're adding is a Morton-style building, and I had to look that up. Can you explain? I now know what it is, but other people may not.
Yeah, it's really just a, I'll say, just kind of like a big pole barn. It will have a concrete floor, walls, minimal heating in there, that aspect of it, but it's just trying to add additional space for mainly storage. And we want to have it, it has to be environmentally controlled, too, because we do plan on storing the fire truck that TOELS has out there, so it needs to be weather-controlled. So, and that's going to free up space in the main building for other programming, other opportunities down the road.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, there's nothing else. Have a great evening. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Moving on, we have no one signed up for public participation this evening, so we will move on to board committees. Does anybody have anything? I don't think committees have been active. They will pick up in the coming weeks. And so now, we will move over to our student representatives.
Hi, my name is Nancy Swawson, I'm in the Jordan Level.
Hello, board, I am Brick Marshall, I'm going to be in Kaufman Elementary. Um, so this summer, we need to do our summer reading, that's kind of driving us freshman education, even at Minkville, where I think they've watched the, um, center, the freshman who started the evening tomorrow. Uh, there are, this is my last season, um, the first football game is starting, uh, the first football game is Friday, the weekend, this new year, kind of, in the spirit of the first of this year, and the common theme is, uh, the, uh, the, the, and everybody's looking forward to banging that out. Um, there wasn't much.
First of all, as you walk around this building, and this is my fault, but we didn't take a moment to thank Mr. Stark and his team for making sure that everything was ready to go in this building. And there's no one who's done as much work this summer as Mr. Stark and his team have done amazing work. So Jeff, thank you, I apologize for not recognizing you in there in front of the group. It wouldn't be possible without you. So thank you very much. I have three things that I'd like to touch on. First of all, is my second job that I didn't know I was going to get. When Governor Dewine appointed me to his property tax work group, we meet every Thursday afternoon, and we have been tasked to have recommendations to the governor by September 30th. I have a lot of new friends. I have a lot of people sharing thoughts with me on how we should redo the tax structure in the state of Ohio. It's been really eye-opening to be part of this process. There are a lot of suggests, a lot of suggestions and a lot of things for us to weed through, but I am honored to have the opportunity to represent the Dublin community. I've had active conversations with members of our city council, with members of our business community, as we look at some of the ways that this system is currently broken, and things that could be done to assist with how we fund not just schools, but other important services across the state. As I said, we're going to continue to meet. I'm not sure what's going to happen with what we present. The speaker hasn't been exactly excited to get recommendations from us, but we're going to give them to the governor. We're going to probably provide both short-term and long-term ideas, and the long-term ideas are going to require a little bit more thought than 11 people working now in a short period can get done. But I will continue to update you and our community in the work that we do, because, again, it's an honor, and it's a lot of work, but it's going to be, I'm hopeful that there can be some positive movement that comes out of this work group. Also, something that's going to be really positively received by our students is the cell phone ban in K-12 education. This is not a Dublin-only plan. This was in the budget bill, it's in-state law, and it's K-12. And there was actually today clarification that said it includes passing time, lunch, recess, no phones. Now, to be open and transparent, I support this. Mrs. Rigby and I have been active, working with some of our elected officials, to have conversations about the distractions that phones can be in our learning environments. We put out a video earlier this week, asking parents for help, and our primary goal right now is to make sure that expectations are clear, and everyone is aware of what those expectations are as we start a new school year. We're not the only ones doing this, it's everybody, and I can tell you from conversations that I've had with colleagues across the state, we all know it's going to be a heavy lift, but we also know from what we did in K-8, and what for many of our teachers, they had already done in their classrooms, that this is something that is manageable and we're going to be able to get through. So we'll continue to work with our administration on this, and I can tell by our student reps that they are so excited about what's going to, what's coming down the road. I will say to all of our students, it's in our school buildings. So if you're a kiddo who's going to leave Scioto and come to Emerald Campus, and your car connects because you're using your map program, by all means, when you're going to College Credit Plus or Emerald Campus, you're not in your school building, it's not during your instructional time, use your map program. Do those things, but when we're in our schools, as I've said over and over, when we all get in planes, it's okay when they close that door to power down your phone or put it in airplane mode, that's what we're going to do in schools. Another very popular topic that we're working on is the redistricting timeline for high schools. Now, we started this back in April with an introductory webinar. We held a public session for folks to kind of tune in in April to see what was taking place. On August 26th, Matt Cropper and Cropper GIS will hold a second virtual session where we'll provide information to our public as to where we are now. The big date will be on Monday, September 29th. September 29th will be when Cropper shares the iteration of maps that will be available for the public, very similar to our elementary and middle school redistricting process. Between the 29th of September and October 12th, the public will have the opportunity to provide comments on those maps that are released on the 29th. And then in November, at the November board meeting, which we will hold at Scioto High School, we will take any of the public input that Cropper has put in, that he's reviewed, and in early November, we will release the final boundaries for high schools for the 25, 26 school year, sorry, 26, 27 school year. We do want to be clear that any high school students, as they start high school this year, will be, have the option to stay at the high school that they start. So any current freshman will have the opportunity to stay where they're going this year and complete their high school career there. And we will give them a deadline to choose, do I want to stay where I am, or do I want to go to the high school that's in my redistricted area? Oof. This year's current eighth grade will be the first students who will not have the option, and by the time we get to next fall, pretty much district-wide, in terms of intra-district open enrollment, it'll pretty much be nonexistent, and you go to school where you live. That's fair, that's consistent, and that's how we plan to move forward. So as we look at this, and we get a lot of people information, a lot of parents asking for individual meetings with me, I am not taking individual meetings about redistricting. All of the facts and everything that we know up until this point is available on the Know the Facts page under the Redistricting tab on the website. And I know there are a lot of rumors out there, people are like, "You know where we're going to go, you know what's going to happen." I don't. You can talk to Mr. Gill, to Dr. Schwanke. We don't know what Mr. Cropper's going to show us in the future before the meeting on the 29th, because he and his team continue to ask us for more information. And as they ask us for additional information, we provide it. We know that Cropper GIS is working on different things, but as we go through this, we're not sure where Matt's going to provide us with those opportunities. Any questions from members of the board?
I have a quick question. Could you explain to the parents how they can be in contact with the student, or how, if they need to relay a message, how they can do that?
Yes, in K-8, we ask if parents need to get information to their students, that they call the office. The office can get information to the student, they can get a note to the teacher. We still have phones in our classrooms. The office can email teachers, and if there's an emergency, or if a kid forgot their lunch, if you bring it to us, we'll be able to get it to those students. In high school, parents can email their student's school email account in high school. So if a student's working on their Chromebook, a district-issued device at the high school level, if a parent wants to get a message to their kid, they can shoot them an email to their school account, and that email will come through. They can also call the office, and we'll get information to students that way.
I have a question about what has been put in place as far as if students do have their cell phones out, support for administrators, teachers, because obviously, the teachers don't want it to be, this to be a 20-minute discussion every day to get kids to put their cell phones away.
I think we're in a really good place in our classrooms. We were basically cellphone-free in classrooms last year. I think our biggest challenge is going to be hallways and lunches, and it's going to be, at first, gentle reminders and asking, and eventually, you get to the point where it's insubordination, and we'll have to have administrative consequences if we get to that point. I'm confident, and our principals are confident, that we're not going to have classroom issues. It's going to be in those places where the kid just is belligerent in a lunchroom situation, or a hallway situation, or a study hall situation. Those are the places that I think our team has the most agita about how we're going to do this, and we don't want to get to the point where it's removing kids from a learning environment because of cell phones. We also don't want to start taking 13, 15, $1,800 devices from kids. It's not the place that we want to go. So if we run into those situations, it will be, put it away, then it will be, call home, We managed elementary pretty well and middle school pretty well, so I think as we go through this process, it's going to be learning and repeating and being consistent. It's going to be our most challenging thing that we do. And I do know that there are classes that, for instructional purposes, a teacher may say, "I want you to have out your device." I know that in some situations, our bands do their drills, and the drills are on their phones, and if they're doing things with their phones in certain situations, and it's part of the instruction, then by all means, we don't want to, you know, not use the technology that's available when it's a learning process.
Question on redistricting. Is there anything this time around with high school that we've learned from Cropper that we would do differently, or are doing differently, from the first go-around?
Well, I think first of all, for those webinars, we're having people submit questions ahead of time, instead of trying to do them in live time, because it just got disjointed when we were trying to, there are certain questions that Mr. Cropper was able to handle about the process, and then there were certain questions that were more educational-specific, that we were trying to type answers on the screen. I was very impressed that he did listen to the comments that came, and he did make adjustments to the maps based on what parents provided to him. This isn't his first go-around. He does this nationally, so for us, it's really learning from him through the process and trying to manage. It's going to be a challenge to manage the emotions as we go through this, because for our young people, and if I could share a message to parents, when parents say, "This is horrible, I'm going to fix it, I'm going to fight for it, you're not going to have to go there," when there aren't changes, it sets their students up for disappointment and to have a bad impression of where they're going to go to school. We spend a lot of time in our administrative retreat, talking about the quality of education in all of our Dublin schools, and that we are one Dublin community. It's one of the messages that Dr. Schwanke and I will share at convocation on Thursday, is that all of our teachers are amazing, and the work we do in all of our schools is the quality that is across our district. And you can see that in this building, where there are 20-plus teachers who followed Mr. Bauer from Wright Elementary to Bishop Elementary. And as those teachers teach here, they're going to teach like they've always taught, and they're going to teach the same stuff that they taught at Wright that they taught here. Mrs. Guerin's going to teach the same stuff that she would have taught at Bailey that she does here, and as we do that, I think it's going to be critical for us, probably more so than with the middle school process, to be consistent on our messaging of the quality of education across all of our schools. We also are keenly aware this is going to be more emotional.
Are you finished?
I'm done.
Okay, any other question? Okay, moving on then to reports and action items from the treasurer's office. Mr. Kern?
Yeah, there's a few things on the agenda this evening. One, first, is a donation from the CAR PTO and Columbus Roofing Company to CAR, to purchase two bike racks, as we have a lot of kids who ride their bikes to CAR. So that's a welcome gift. We have student activity purpose clauses, the majority here are our high school's class of 2029. As we start the new school year, the freshmen coming in and their class funds, getting those established, and then we have two service clubs, the Students in Action and MedLife Chapter. We have several of our annual transfers in here. The first one, transfer one, is our transfer to our middle school athletics to help their fund their operations. You may remember, with younger children, you may have had at one point of doing the magazine sales at the, at the middle schools to fund them. We decided a few years ago that, A, people don't read magazines anymore, get them delivered; second, we were competing with different, whether it's booster groups, whatever it may be, PTOs around the district for those funds, and then you also had discrepancy between the middle schools, too, and what they could raise and so forth. So we equalized it and have a annual donation to help with their athletic funds at the middle schools. The second one is also transfers to our athletic funds, but it's middle school and high schools. This is for our safety supplies, which would be like trainer supplies and different other things, but also at the high schools, help out with the pool fees over the Dublin Rec Center for their swim teams. Third one here is, and this is the last time you'll be seeing this, but this is our general fund, transfer to our energy conservation sinking fund. In 2010, 15 years ago, we issued, at that time, Qualify School Construction Bonds, or QSCUBs is their acronym for them. Those are bonds that, bonds that were issued for energy conservation worker throughout the district, and as part of those, and to fund, to pay off the principal of those, you're supposed to transfer any savings that were initiated because of that project into the sinking fund to be able to pay off the bonds' principal at the end, as we have one, one principal payment at the end here on December 1st. The one thing to know, there's QSCUBs is, when they were issued, at that time, they were 100% for the interest was subsidized by the federal government. Currently, it is at 95, like 0.4% of the interest. So really, essentially, it was interest-free bonds that were issued to do energy conservation work. This is the last one, as we pay off the principal this December 1st. And the last one is part of Admin Guideline 7510 for rentals that we've had with our synthetic fields, and that transfer from general fund and the support fund to our high school athletics departments, real small there. And finally, we have an appropriation change, as we were awarded a $14,000 grant from Ohio Arts Council. It's, I think it's an artist in residence, and I can't recall what building it was in, but yes, that is a grant, so to be able to use those monies, we have to have the appropriation approved. And that's it this evening. Any questions?
Okay, then it is recommended by the treasurer to approve items 6B through 6H. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Messick, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. De Silva. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. De Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Gillis?
Yes.
And Mrs. Rigby?
Yes. Motion passes four to zero. Reports from the Department of Academics and Student Learning, Dr. Schwanke.
Okay, thank you, everyone. So we're going to do a little bit of toggling back and forth with some slides. Thank you, Cassie, over there for keeping up. Rather than toggle the people, we'll move the slides. So I'm going to share a couple of things first, beginning with the Journey 2030 annual goals that we have for your approval tonight, and then we will, Mrs. Marple will come up, and then Mr. Andres. So at our last board meeting, we went, we dove deep into the Journey 2030 goals, and I just wanted to revisit the alignment of those goals, because I wasn't, I'm not sure that we were clear on what we do with this document after approval. So Journey 2030 is kind of our guiding document on where we will go with our, with our four departments. So we have master facility planning, we have academics, we have networking and partnerships, and we have student services, student experience. So that's kind of a 30,000-square-foot view of where we want to go with these goals. So we write them as a team, and then we share them with our buildings. And that happened on July 31st at a administrative retreat. We shared the goals, we explained the why, and then we gave each of our building administrators time to work as a team to think about those goals and how they apply to their actual buildings. We asked each building to write three goals, under the umbrella of the Journey 2030 annual goals. The goals were, one, please write a goal that, however it applies to your building, either an early literacy goal or a pathways goal. So I make that distinction because, just to make the point, that all of our annual goals don't necessarily apply to every child and every grade level. So early literacy, that was elementary. Secondary, we asked them to focus on a pathways goal. So that was the first goal that we asked them to write. The second one was a data-driven instructional goal. So we said, "Look at your data, here it all is, look at it and see where your focus is going to be instructionally this year." The third goal, we left them up to, we left it up to them to make a decision that's best for their building. It might be a certain grade level, it might be a certain content area, it might be based on student sense of belonging, or whatever. We asked them to write the goal that applied to their building the best. After that, those building principals will take it back to their schools, and in the first first three days of when the staff is here, which I'll talk about in just a minute, they'll ask teachers to use their building goals to develop classroom goals. And now I'm going to circle you back to our culture playbook where we talk about, we tell our teachers, own your 20 square feet. So the goals that they write really should be applicable to the students that are in front of them. And I say that because our buildings are so different in what they need, what their students need. So the annual goals don't capture everything we're doing at every school with every classroom. It's just like Mr. Stark, he had 45 projects this year. They're not all captured on the master facilities area. And even if they are, they only sort of are. So example, it says Riverside HVAC. Well, that didn't include replacing all the lights and all the ceiling tiles, replacing bookshelves, replacing floor problems. So there's a lot of things that might not be captured but might really be personalized and differentiated at the building level. So with all of that said, I did want to open up for any questions if the Board of Education has them, and I know Lori and Chris, Jeff are also here to answer questions if needed before we ask.
I do have a question. So if a parent is concerned about these goals, if they're reading and they see the Journey 2030 and they're looking at this, and they, if they want the deeper dive, they're best off going to their principal because their goals, as you just said, may not necessarily align and may fit, well, will fit that building better.
So, yeah, that's exactly right, Mrs. Rigby. So they will align, but they might not appear to align, if that makes sense. So the early literacy goal, for example, that Daniel Wright creates for their youngest readers will be very different from the one that Mr. Bauer wrote for this building. And I also think it's important to note that our teams spend a lot of time looking at data throughout the year. They do what we call data digs. And teachers are released from their classroom one day a year to sit down with their grade levels, pull all the data from all the assessment and look literally, and I remember this from being a principal, you look at every single child. So if a parent asks that question, I would say, go to your building principal. And as a building principal, I would say, okay, what's your question? Is it school-wide? Is it grade level or is it about your child? Because regardless, you know, whatever you want me to tell you, I've got it. I've got the data, I've got the rationale behind the goal. And we just need to drill down for that parent to see what it is exactly they'd like to know. So we can answer district level, our principals can answer building level, and our classroom teachers can answer student level questions. Thank you.
When you're having the teachers write their student level goals, are you waiting until they get the students that they have currently to see that data? Because using data from previous student bodies?
Not only is that an emphatic yes, Mrs. Messick, but we don't have them fill them out, we don't have a document where they need to, you know, put them somewhere at a certain time. Because anyone who's taught will remember, the student that walks in on August 19th is not the student that you have on October 19th or December 19th. They change quickly and that's what we want. If a student is in the same academic place in December that they were in August, then we have a real problem. They change quickly, they learn quickly, and when you add the student services that they may be receiving any supports, those are collaboratively written and developed. So we wouldn't want a parent to say, "Okay, show me your classroom goals for Journey 2030." They exist at the student level and they're shared when our teachers meet with parents. So that's where you might say, you might hear a teacher say, "Okay, I'm going to pull out the MTSS plan we have for your child," or "I'm going to pull out the behavior plan," or "I'm going to go over the MAP results that your child just has so that we can talk about what I'm working with your child on." Please.
At our admin retreat, we talked about what happens in the margins is what makes Dublin, Dublin. I don't have to ask Tracy, as a second grade teacher in this building, she's looked at the data from the kids who are coming into her class already. Our teachers have been looking at the data for their class lists, when they got their class lists, thinking about where do these kids need to go? What groups do they need to be in? How am I going to organize this? Our teachers do this before they're even required to be here. And I think if you look at the turnout from tonight, from the staff here, it would be like that at any building, if we had an event like tonight in any building, that you're going to get the staff there and their rooms are ready. And they've already started to look at this data. Because for us, what we believe is that we want each individual child to reach his or her potential. And it's not always about an aggregate score. It's about getting every individual student. And it's the same thing as we talk about this for pathways. We have 50, 60% of our kids who are going to a four-year college. Get out of their way. That 50 to 60% of our kids, we do that really, really well. And our AP and our IB and our CCP, we do that really, really well. I don't want those kids spending time dabbling in other areas that they don't need to dabble in. If that's where you're going, we want to get you there. So when we look at those pathway goals, it's about every kid. It's about how do we find for the kids who maybe don't need to go to a four-year college? How do we find their pathway? And how do we help them and create experiences for them to see what's going to be there?
And to that point too, data is only as good as the moment it was taken. And I think that's critical to remember too. And I remember as a teacher, there would be times I'd have a piece of data and I'd say, "That's not the student that I know in the classroom, though. So how can they produce this certain level of achievement or ability?" And then their test says something else and I've got to find where they are in the middle. So teachers are constantly doing that work, not only as teams and not only with help from Mrs. Sullivan, our data and assessment coordinator, but also day-to-day. And so we also need to make sure we're using updated data. And that's kind of the point about, you know, you can look at your, I'm sorry, we're using you as an example, but you're here and your class, but she, the data that she looks at on August 19th is going to be very, very old data because that was from the spring. So it's absolutely informative and helpful, but she might say, "Wow, this kid did a lot of reading this summer." Or, "Maybe we're going to do a little more reading this year." So every decision is made personally.
Lori, correct me if I'm wrong, MAPS renorming for the first time since pre-COVID. So the norms for previous MAP tests for the past probably seven or eight years, as they redo those norms, we're not going to be able to compare the previous seven or eight years to the re-normed test. And as the state tells us, here's the new literacy resource you get to use, and they mandate it. It takes a little bit of time for teachers to implement that new resource in their classrooms. So one of the challenges that we know, and it's sometimes hard for our public to see, is as the norms change, as the resources are changed by the state, as the tests change, there's time that we adapt and adjust and we live by our values and we're always growing. And it's all part of this journey that we're on through public education. But at the end of the day, and we find out this every year when we do our survey of our parents for their satisfaction, at the end of the day, people are moving into $800,000 homes because they want their kids in our schools and they want the education that we're providing. And there's a reason they move here and it's because of the amazing teachers in our classrooms and because of what we do each and every day. So that's a burden, but we're also honored.
No pressure, teachers.
We got it.
You've got this. No problem.
One last question.
Yes, please.
Because he brought up MAP testing. What grade do we MAP test through? Because with reading skills and especially with literacy and tiered literacy and all the new subjects coming out.
Thank you for that question. I did make some eye contact with Lori just to make sure I didn't speak out of turn or anything, but we test all students K to 8 and then some students in ninth, nine through 12, depending on their special needs. One to eight. Yeah, we're, let's give them a minute, shall we? Thank you. That's right. That is huge.
Do you have anything that you use, 912, that helps teachers determine reading levels of their students so that they can provide tiered reading?
You want to go ahead? I was going to say, no, we don't have a universal screening, but we do each individual subject area. And so the, it's need-based. There's not a universal required assessment for our high schoolers. Okay. You, this will be up for approval here in a moment, but now we're going to flip to my next slide, which is I just wanted to give you a quick snapshot of our first three staff days. Let's take a moment to note that there are many staff who were here all summer, working really hard, the operations team, the maintenance team, and so many teachers, literally hundreds of teachers that came in over the summer for professional development. But on Thursday, we'll all be here. And it will, we are too big now to all cram into one gymnasium and be all together at the same time. So we have people split up into kind of three different schedules. But over the first three days, our staff will be attending convocation. They will be working on those building goals that I just explained. They will be undergoing safety training. And I'd like to thank Mr. Ulring and Lieutenant Stoll from the Dublin Police Department for not only planning that training, but also training the principals on Friday all day for that. Each building will have a Dublin SRO there that will team up with the principals for this safety training. We'll also have classroom walkthroughs, and that looks different at elementary than it does to middle and it does to high. At high school, it's kind of a self-guided tour. And at elementary, they'll have those standard classroom walkthroughs and middle school somewhere in the middle there with how they organize that. And then there will be staff work time. Our teachers will get their classrooms ready, they'll have all the things set up so that that first day of school when the students walk in, we are ready for them. Now, Cassie, you can flip to Mrs. Marple's slide.
Good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Marchausen and Mr. Kern. Thank you for an opportunity to share some back-to-school updates from the teaching and learning lens. I want to start with a recap of our summer programs because there has been so much good happening in Dublin city schools over the summer. Listen to these numbers. This summer, we had 285 elementary students from all over the district participate in early literacy summer programs. In that group were 27 amazing, rising fourth graders who were able to meet their benchmarks that eliminate the need for a reading improvement and monitoring plan. This is a celebration for those 27 kids and their families. At middle school, 189 middle schoolers participated in math and literacy summer learning. And in those sessions, we really work to make that learning fun for them and learning that sticks. We're really focused there on gap closing. For high school, 59 students earned 151 credits through our credit recovery program. We had, this is astounding, 642 students attempt 886 credits in our DCS virtual course offerings. These are all students taking advanced credit over the summer by choice. 24 English learners participated in our Rise Up Program and earned their 12-point credentials. And in our first-ever educational and community interpreting course summer opportunity, 24 multilingual students from all three high schools completed an 80-hour training course in conjunction with next-generation language access to become professionally qualified, trained, community interpreters in languages that include Russian, Spanish, Dari, Pashto, Japanese, Arabic, Chinese, and Swahili. Isn't that amazing? It's amazing. So at the conclusion of that course, students can work as qualified community interpreters. So it's been a busy summer, but now we're turning the page to a new school year in teaching and learning. And we are very excited about the rollout of all-day kindergarten. When I look at this building and I see all of the students flowing in tonight, it got me very excited. And so if you'll look at the slide at these beautiful kindergarteners, these are some of our newest Dublin city school students who have come in for assessment. Our teachers meet one-on-one with our new kindergarteners, assess them and prepare to have them here for a full day. In addition to that, we have been outfitting our classrooms with new materials, knowing that purposeful playtime for kindergarteners will be critical in their development, both academically and socially. We've had over 370 roughly elementary teachers spend a day working this summer, being trained in our My View rollout. This is our new core resource at K5 for English Language Arts. That's really awesome, that nearly 400 teachers came and spent a summer day with us, learning about their resource and collaborating on implementation. So our instructional coaches and teachers are tooled up, we are ready to implement, and we have ongoing training planned throughout the year to support our teachers because that's a very big lift for our elementary teachers to implement a new resource and at the same time, align it to our 95 phonics. And then final update, a year ago, Dublin city schools put into practice a process that allowed parents to receive email updates informing them of checkout activity in their student's library account. It was an awesome addition to services we provide to our families, but it was a little cumbersome for everybody involved. It required an awful lot of lifting on the front end of hand inputting email addresses and it required our media specialists on a daily, regular basis to make sure everything was accurate and that parents were getting those emails. So we're excited to announce, and we shared this with our parents in their July 27th parent newsletter, that starting this school year, parents have login access that allows them to control the time and pace of those logins. They'll be able to log into Destiny at any time of their choice and see their current checkout and the checkout history of their children in Dublin city schools. Are there any questions from the Board of Education? Thank you. I will pass it on to Chris Andres.
Thanks, Lori. Over the past few years, we've talked a lot about the OSU Social Work cadre. And starting this school year, I'm pleased to share that every single one of our buildings will have a full-time mental health specialist. Some of our larger buildings will have two or even three full-time people in their building to support our students. The next chapter of this project is earning our mental and behavioral health accreditation. And there's two reasons for this. The first one is because the accreditation shows the community that we operate under the highest standards of safety and service for our kids. And the second is so we can expand services even more in the future and be reimbursed for those services. So there are a few different accreditation organizations out there and we chose to go with COA, or the Council on Accreditation. And their website states, quote, "Our staff and volunteer peer reviewers work closely with organizations to help them enhance and align practices with our standards. More than an evaluation, our process builds the knowledge and skills to engage in continuous improvement, adopt best practices, and achieve organizational excellence." Some other agencies accredited by COA, you might recognize the Buckeye Ranch, Directions for Youth and Family Services, St. Vincent's Center, and the National Youth Advocacy Program. We've already completed our application, we've been deemed eligible for accreditation, and we're going through what they call the intake and self-study process now. So we're aligning our policies, our practices, and our procedures to COA. The next step will occur in January when COA staff come onsite to Dublin to visit our buildings to make sure that what we say we do is what we actually do. And finally, we'll receive a rating that should lead to our official accreditation. Once that process is over, we'll apply with the State of Ohio for the state's accreditation. And it will be an important but less rigorous process because, well, we've already done most of the work with COA. At that point, so when I stand up here, probably not here, but next year in August, I hope to be able to say, "We're accredited and now we're starting the next phase, which will be getting paneled with insurance companies." And that's the final step, to be able to offer the services that we offer now, free to our kids and to our families, but also add additional grant funding opportunities from the community and offer family and outpatient services in the evenings and weekends to our kids and families, charging private insurance or Medicaid or just like any other accredited mental and behavioral health center. Any questions?
Can you just repeat, when will COA be onsite?
They'll be here in January.
January. Okay.
Okay, and the final thing on for approval tonight is the team physicians. This is a recurring agenda item and I won't, you can read each person's name and what they do on there. they do on there. That's the final item for your approval. Thank you.
Just one, one question, Chris, I thought of. If a student doesn't, for students who don't have insurance, how does that, how does that work? What happens to, to the cost on that?
So they would continue to receive the services that we provide already, free and no charge, and just, that would meet their educational needs. If we encountered that situation, I think we would probably do what our partners at Ohio Health do right now in our in-school clinics. And that would be, we would try to find through grant funding or some other funding source a way to be able to cover those costs.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no additional questions, it is recommended by the superintendent that the Board approve items 8A and 8B. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Gillis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by, I'm sorry.
Me.
Mrs. De Silva. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Gillis?
Yes.
Mrs. De Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
And Mrs. Rigby?
Yes. Motion passes four to zero. Reports from the Department of Operations, Mr. Stark.
Good evening, we only have a few items. The first one is, for your approval is to allow us to join the Met of Cooperative Bidding. This is the annual Metta bid where it allows us to buy new buses. They do the bidding, they get different manufacturers, and we're allowed to pick from there, and it meets our public bid requirement. The next item is for the Jerome weight room, and this would have a similar scope to the upgrade that we just recently completed at Sciota. And we're hiring, what we're recommending to the Board is to hire Fanning and Howie for a fee of about $67,000, and they will pull together a scope that will redesign the room, floors, ceilings, lights, and especially the HVAC requirements in there because it needs more humidity control. And lastly, this is an update, as we do every school year, of payment and LOU payments. And we'll have probably a few more during the year as they, as they come about. Any questions?
Okay, thank you. It's recommended that the Board approve items 10A through 10C. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Messick. Is there a second? I'll second. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigby?
Yes.
Mrs. De Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Gillis?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero. Reports from Human Resources, Mr. Boney.
Good evening, members of the Board. I'll start tonight on the certified agenda. Starting, you'll see administrative actions that are related to the staffing of DEP Elementary. Mr. Urrsam has submitted his letter of retirement, and Mr. Bert Stellers is being recommended as the interim principal for this coming school year. And then the recommendation of Kelly Sabo in this section is to backfill Mr. Stellers' position at Chapman. You'll see a salary change request, and this is to provide compensation for Dr. Martins for working days outside of her regular contractor in the summer. And then one certified resignation and two student interns who worked in our Ed Tech Department over the summer. The new hires that are on tonight's agenda, almost complete our hiring for this coming school year, we have one more to go. So hopefully you'll see that in the next agenda. And then we have the opportunity to welcome our newly hired staff during new teacher orientation last week. Several items are on that are preparation for this school year, so substitutes that will fill in where we have needs, six period pay requests, and then a leave of absence for an employee who will be an administrative intern for us. You'll see a few summer items that are on for staff that provide services to students over the past few months. And then all the supplementals on tonight's agenda are for athletic events, school-based events, and then club activities. The classified agenda is pretty full tonight. You'll see 19 resignations along with three retirements. The retirement, so Tina Edwards will retire as a transportation special education bus aide with 13 years in Dublin. Doug Meyer retires as a transportation head bus mechanic with 24 years in Dublin. And then Don Miller retiring from Chapman Elementary as a paraprofessional with 18 years here. We have 18 new hires and then several salary changes. This time of year, we always have a lot of items that are in our classified section, which is fairly typical this time of year. And then the last item is a stipend, and this is for van driver training. The State of Ohio requires training for any staff member who transports students in a district-owned van, and that's on tonight for your approval as well. And that concludes the HR portion of tonight's agenda. Are there any questions?
Thank you. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board approve items 12A through 12C. I'll motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. De Silva. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Ruby?
Yes.
Mrs. De Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Gillis?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero. Are there any items for future board discussion, future agenda items? Dr. Marchausen, you're looking at me like you want to say something.
Well, I just want to take a moment to congratulate the Chamber of Commerce that will be celebrating its 50th anniversary on Thursday. They're having an event down by Pins Mechanical, open to the public from 2:00 to 5:00. They just announced North to Nashville will be performing there. And then there's a dinner that evening that I will be representing the district, as well as several past superintendents, past mayors, chairpeople of the chamber. So congratulations to them and all the work that they do to help keep Dublin strong with our business community and our partnerships with them. I am honored to be a member of the Chamber Executive Board, and it's great to get to work with the business leaders in our community.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Meeting is adjourned.